Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Lord's Prayer. First, I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 2nd, 2021 Legislative Session of the Wycomico County Council.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done. To stay. Give us our trespasses. That who has trespassed against us. In these non-attaches deliver us from evil. Plenipotentiary flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands
Ms. Hurley, will you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Before we proceed, I have a couple of announcements to make. First, item one on the agenda, which is the discussion with Secretary Ben Grumbles with the Maryland Department of Environment, has been canceled. We are in the process of rescheduling that, but that's due to the snow event. And then, second, at least once a year, we like to do some cross-training in the council office. So with your permission, Mr. President, I'd like to read the items on the consent agenda. And then, Mrs. Lynn Sandy, who is to your right, will present the remaining items on the agenda, if that is okay with you.
That is fine. Thank you.
We have three items on the consent agenda. First is the legislative minutes from January the 19th, 2021. Open work session minutes from December the 15th, 2020 pertaining to the letter of support for the Horizon Program. And open work session minutes from December the 15th, 2020 pertaining to the discussion with the Board of Education.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second.
To move.
Got a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley.
Mrs. Sandy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the submission of appointments to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. The Airport Commission acts in an advisory capacity. They review and make recommendations to the airport manager and the county executive with respect to all matters of the airport.
All right, I need approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Would you like me to read the resolutions?
I would. I was waiting on you.
Okay. Resolution number 142021 confirming the appointment of Weston S. Young, P.E., as a member to the Wycomico County Airport Commission. Resolution number 152021 confirming the appointment of Gregory Padham, B.A.J.D., as an ex-officio member to the Wycomico County Airport Commission.
All right. We do have Mr. Weston Young in the audience with us, but we shouldn't hold that against him, but welcome. It's good seeing you again. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Chair votes aye, passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item is resolution number 162021, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the deferred compensation for 57 plan account in the amount of $110,000. And Mr. John Posoda should be available, the acting county executive, if there's any questions. I think he's in the building.
Okay. Need a motion to approve resolution number 16-2021.
To move.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, resolution number 16-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 16-2021 passes unanimously. Okay, at this time, if there are any public comments, please limit all public comments to three minutes or less, and any presented material may be submitted to the council members. Please include 10 copies. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, disruptive behavior, and such as shouting or booing and stopping the feet will not be permitted. We had a couple complaints at one of the recent meetings of some things that were said, so we decided we're going to put this in as a reminder, so we really appreciate it. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, any council comments? Mr. Hastings?
I'll just say again to... Just looking back at the numbers, we've lost 50 members of our community. You heard me right, 50 since our last meeting, not even a month ago. That's a pretty astounding amount of folks who've passed away. I just want to say my heart goes out to...I know now, I know multiple families who have been affected, and we try to be...take our things very serious here where we're spread apart. You can't tell that on camera, but I feel terrible for that and just want to let any community members know and they're supportive and happy to help in any way or anything I can do personally, but I know it's tough. It's pretty sad.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hastings. Do we have any more council comments? Ms. Ackley?
I just want to thank Mr. Robinson for always coming to the meetings and being my eyes and ears of the West Side, so thank you.
Thank you. Any more council comments? Okay, with that said, need a motion in a second to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions article, section 3-305b1, to discuss personnel matters relating to two separate evaluations and appointment of a deputy director of emergency services, which will be held in closed session to protect the confidentiality of all individuals. This time, we have an open work session to discuss the capital improvement program fiscal years 2022 to 2026, and we do have Mr. Mark Whitelock, who discussed the Department of Public Works.
Excuse me, Mr. President, do you want to get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, thank you. Good job, Sandy. Usually, they are jumping right on it. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
To move.
Then do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, back to the capital improvement. Mr. Whitelock? Thank you, Sandy.
Lynn.
Lynn. Sandy. Evening.
Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works. So what I thought I'd do is go down through the CIP and give you a brief summary of the projects that are there, and at the end, if council has any questions...
Okay.
Then you can ask them then. So first, we have is the WIP program and $200,000, and that's more or less a revolving fund, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Our proposal for that money coming up is we're expecting to receive a grant from MDE for Cleanout Stormwater Pond and Hunter's Mill Development. That...right around that $200,000 will be our match money for that grant. Wycomico River dredging support, $350,000. That's to support the ongoing development of the property that we bought at Sharp's Point Dread Site and to support the activities down in Deals Island for the proposed next dredge of the river. And that will...that pretty much ties up engineering. Roads, MS4 projects, $500,000. It's pretty much merged with the WIP programs. There's different things that are slated for...improve previous and imperious surfaces in the county. Secondly, on those, Northwood Drive, Nailor Mill Road traffic signal, that's to assist with cutting down on some of the low impacts that happen in that area and to assist with left turns towards the Sheriff's Department coming off Northwood Drive. That has already had a traffic study to it, and it was accepted as an acceptable site for a traffic signal.
So why does it cost $200,000?
That's actually...well, part of it will be the design of it and getting ready for it. There's some easements still even there that have to be obtained. The other part is the construction of the light itself, and those are actually estate rates for putting in a traffic signal of that caliber.
Okay.
So...so then, we can move on from there. There's a Three Bridges Road. Three Bridges Road to $350,000 that you see there is match money for grants. That will be a bridge replacement for that bridge. That bridge has insufficient rating, and we have done some work with the state already with some design work.
When do you think that work will proceed?
Hopefully, next year. That would be my hope. Like I say, we're in the design phase of it right now, is designing it, and then, once that design is done, then we'll work with the state to get it bid out, secure the funding, and replace the bridge. So that's it for roads. Moving on, solid waste, landfill solid construction, $7 million. That's for building two new cells at the landfill. Cell nine, the current cell that we have, two years into it, is probably at 50% capacity now. Normally, it would take a little longer, but we've actually coming into the landfill as increased, and so we're not going to have the capacity to continue to push it off. And instead of working like we did last time, where we were kind of pushed to get the cell built, we want to go ahead and get it started, so we'll have the cell in place when we're ready to use it.
Mark, what do we attribute that increase of material being brought to the landfills? Is there any particular thing we can identify as to...
You know, I always look at it as...I look at the building trends when building is up. Most certainly, you got CND, construction materials are coming in. The population of the county itself has increased, and I think when I first came around, it was like 90,000, and what, we're at 110,000, somewhere between 110,000, to just a growing county and a better economy, really.
Do we...do you see any trends as far as, you know, waste coming from outside of our county, coming to our accounting?
I think it could still be a problem. I think when we raised the tipping fee this year, it did level the playing field a little more, where it doesn't make it as attractive to run from Worcester or Dorchester or Somerset to Wycomico, because what you're really trying to do is offset fuel costs, and so I think that has helped. We are still, though, the lowest tipping fee on the lower eastern shore, and so we're always gonna...you know, if you're just over the line, yeah, you're gonna get some...you'll probably get a little saturation, but I don't think it is as bad as it was.
But I do know, not too long ago, I think it was in December, that we got some complaints about people from Delmar, Delaware, coming into our landfill.
Yes, and you do, and so here, the struggle with trying to police something like that is you may have a contractor that lives in Delaware, and he has all Delaware-plated vehicles, and he...you know, he'll come into our landfill, and basically, if he says that it's coming from a job that he has in Wycomico County, then we don't have any way of questioning that. So we have no policing unit to say where one is coming from unless we were to go out and actually follow a vehicle and see where he's going.
Right.
So...
So we're not selling stickers to Delaware people?
It's always been the practice, since we've had the landfill permits, that I believe it's within a mile of a transfer station, even if it was over the line, they did sell you the sticker, but it was at an increased...I think it's $165...
Okay.
For that permit, but when we base it, we actually look at the address that we have, and we look on Google Maps to see how far, because it's hard to tell sometimes.
Okay.
What's the life expectancy you have left out there?
Life expectancy on the Brick Hill roadside of the landfill, probably now, I would probably give it 13 years.
So any plans on the other side?
The other plant...the other side is being permitted right now. We should be fairly close to being done with the Phase Two. It's a three-phase permit system. We've already done our Phase One. We're in the middle of Phase Two, which is basically groundwater testing. They test for different...you know, what your soil layers are like and the different things, and then, once we're past that, then it is more of a MDE approval-type permitting process that we normally go through.
I was trying to figure out the question, because I was going to ask what the life expectancy of each one of the cells, is that 13 years?
I'd say no. I would say that's that whole area on the Brick Hill roadside. Now, once that 13 years is done, and the permitting process would be done for the opposite side of the road, I would say to that, you know, we've been told that's a 30-year expansion over there. Most certainly, when counties grow and, you know, you have more residents in the county, you have more building in the county, you have more industry in the county, those numbers are going to change.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Miss Ackley?
I had a few. The Hunter's Mill project, when...what's the estimated date of completion for that?
We are...we have some comments from MDE right now. Some were for us, some were for the consultants, so we're trying to address those now. I would say probably realistically, you would see bidding out this summer and probably construction more towards the fall.
And are you in communication with the homeowners association? Okay.
Yes, I have been in contact with them.
And the same...is it the same with Westsdale?
Yes.
Project? Okay.
Well, I actually need to touch back with them, but yes, yes.
And then, my last one is Barron Creek.
Barron Creek...
It keeps moving the year back. Like, is it ever going to happen?
You know, I think the design is done. I think you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.4 million. We're looking at a couple other things. There was some other work that had to be done, but that was widening out some, even from the footprint that we had started with.
I'm sorry, you said $104 million to fix there?
No.
$1.4.
$1.4 million. So we had to widen it out some to set the guardrails on the side of the road, because in the original design, it didn't call for that, so we had to open that footprint up just a little bit. So they're just basically putting the finishing touches on that now, so I would expect to...the administration would bring something to you at some point in the near future.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so secondly, on solid waste, we're asking for $150,000 to start putting in perimeter fence around the landfill borrow pit. We have been...we've had problems in the past with people coming into the borrow pit, and we can't police them. My fear is, one day, the water in that pit is deep, and people will drown if they get out there and they get in a bad condition. Was to start on the trailer park side of that and fence that off, so that we'll stop getting some of that migration from the trailer park there.
Comes to our church parking lot.
They do that, too.
They park in the back and go through there.
But I think what you would see is, as we can afford it, we would start to segment that fence all the way around, so that we can close it in.
I thought that was already fenced in.
No, I'm actually surprised that nobody's made us fence it in, so from our standpoint, you know, we want to try and be a little more proactive and maybe save somebody's life.
Right. Joe, do you have a question?
He did look like he had a question.
Mark?
Yeah.
We've had complaints about people not hearing. Could you pull your mic pretty closer and...
Yeah, I can do it. How's that?
You might want to pull the mask down.
Well, it helps, too. So lastly, for solid waste, is the ongoing permitting of the landfill expansion, which is $250,000. Total expansion cost for permitting is...should end up somewhere in the neighborhood of between $500,000 and $600,000 is what we should spend on that. And for Public Works, I believe that's all we have.
Mark, a couple quick questions. The Westside Collector Phase Three?
Yes.
Is that...are we done with that? I know we approved in 2020. We had $2 million was the last commitment that we made. Is that finished and over with?
No, Phase Three is not in. Phase Two is in. Phase Three is not in.
Because what I'm finding out and going through the CIPs is that if you go back to old CIPs, you'll see where funding was put in, and then, stuff just by the nature of how we work things is that things will just disappear, and I hadn't seen any reference to the Phase Three after 2020, so I'm wondering, well, where are we? What happened to the...to that initial $2 million commitment, and, you know...
I couldn't speak for what happened to the $2 million commitment, because I wasn't...you know, I didn't have control of that, but I do believe that the former administration at some point did want to build Phase Three, because it ties in with some drainage projects that we had over on the other road.
Yeah, and it really isn't for you. It's really more for, I guess, for the acting county executive. I mean, if we approve a CIP, and let's say in 2020, it's...we've approved $2 million for a project, I'm wondering what happens the next year when you look at that, and that project's no longer there? I think there needs to be some type of continuity as far as what happens between one year to the next, when these projects are in there at one time, and then, they're gone. We had Westsnesdale, which was 100,000, fiscal year '21.
Yes.
That project's completed, I guess?
No, that is the project...
We're currently doing that this year, then?
Yes, that was our plan to do it this year.
Okay, and the Kewood Drive, that was thrown into 2024.
Kewood Drive, it has dropped off. I know we are doing work over there.
It's scheduled for '24.
For '24, which we're doing work over there.
What do you mean it's dropped off?
Well, I don't see it on my current CIP.
Okay.
It's not to say that it's not there.
Right.
It's not in my...
It's not this year.
It's not this year.
Yeah, they got it for...they have it for '24.
Okay.
The engineers have told me, our engineers have told me, they're still doing design work for that area, and they would expect to do some work over there, yes.
How would you say...how's the success we're having with the fill dirt from Conley Mill?
Well...
That's why we bought the property primarily.
We did, and it's very good dirt.
Yeah.
It is very good dirt, and we're having very good success with it. In cell construction, you know, coming up, we have the $7 million price tag for cell construction. Actually, we're going to build two cells at that point to give us a little breathing room before...between the next one, and actually, we're bringing dirt in from Conley Mill currently to kind of help offset the cost of that. My hope would be is that we would shave somewhere between $4 and $5 million off of cell construction by having the fill dirt on site when the contractors come in.
That'd be good, because that's really why we agreed to take the property on, because we...Weston had suggested that we really could make quite a bit of money, or save a lot of money.
It's a very...it's kind of an edgy thing, you know? We're going to use the dirt for that and bring it over, yes, because we're going to save money with cell construction, but actually, you know, that dirt is slated for landfill operations, normal daily landfill operations, so anytime we do something like that, you know, it comes back, and it shortens our distance between us and the goal line as far as our dirt goes.
Yeah, that's good.
So dirt's dirt, and at some point in time, will be an issue for solid waste.
The only other question I would ask is if...I would love to see a list of the MS4 projects. It's about...it's 500,000 every single year.
Every year, yeah.
And that's pretty...that's a...that's a pretty large project, so if you have a list of what those projects are going to be over the next few years, it'd be great to see that.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And I'm glad Mr. Cannon brought up Nailor Mill Road and the dirt, because there was a lot of discussion on how we were going to transport that dirt from Nailor Mill Road to the landfill.
Yes.
Conley Mill Road.
Conley Mill, I'm sorry, yes.
So right now, we're...we had $600,000 in the operating budget of solid waste. We have private contractors plus two county dump trucks. I think my hope is, is in the upcoming budget, if it's approved through administration, we'll probably ask for another dump truck and then try to rely solely on our own forces for bringing that dirt.
So will the traffic be going down Nailor Mill Road?
The traffic is going down Nailor Mill Road.
Right, because there's already a lot of traffic there, and that's why I was going to ask.
Yeah, so I mean, we're currently doing that, so it's not going to increase or decrease any.
Didn't they say that the reason why they got a contractor was that it was cheaper for a contractor than for the county to put their trucks out there doing it? It was...they said it was a study done, and that was the reason why they put it out on bid, and that contractor got there.
Not what they said, yes.
That's what they said? So if that's what they said, so what's the truth?
It's cheaper for us to haul our own dirt.
It's cheaper for us, okay. Any more questions? Go ahead, Ms. Ackley.
I was just looking at the engineering fees, and they're about $550,000 a year. Is that with...is that in addition to the Public Works Director?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Public Works Director or Deputy Director of Public Works are split between engineering, solid waste, and roads, so each get a segment of the salaries of those positions. So it doesn't have anything to do with the CIP. These are just capital projects that the Public Works wants to do.
Ms. Ellen?
I just wanted to make sure it's clear that these numbers are just capital numbers. This doesn't have anything to do with salary, benefits, operating costs.
Yeah, that'll come in.
So, yes, it looks like the same number every year, but that's for very specific projects that the state's kind of requiring us to do these MS4 projects, so it's all project cost, not salary benefit operating. Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Any more questions for Mr. Whitelock? Yes, Mr. Hastings?
Just so it's...these are...since Councilwoman Ackley brought it up, the...first of all, do we have a certified engineer? I don't know. Don't we have to have somebody to sign off on plans and work and...
Have a P.E. engineer.
We do?
Yes.
Yeah.
We...we just got him. He just passed the task. We'd been utilizing...actually, it was at Heat Wall. He was a former Director of Public Works and has retired, and he has been doing it as a consulting activity for signing off on our stormwater plan, so as far as the flow of our work moving through, nothing has changed. It's still...yeah, the flow of the work still goes. It hasn't stopped. It hasn't... There's been no hiccups.
Just so it's that, of course, we'll talk with the acting county executive, but we certainly do need to make sure that we have a Director of Public Works and a great deputy. I'm glad you're doing a great job, and you and your team have handled a lot, but that's...we still need to make sure that we're staffing up. The other quick things, if you don't mind, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
You know, this has come across a couple times now. You know, Lee Beecham, a couple years ago, was really great at looking and trying to find ways to save the county money, and I know he had put together a great plan for saving millions of dollars over X amount of years. I don't know what we can do to continue to focus on those kinds of activities, but...
Well, we're still actively looking for grants and opportunities that will help us, you know, in our projects through Public Works and for the county. We've never stopped that.
Even like renewable energy type, you know...
Renewable energy, I mean, yeah, we're...we have some...we have some solar things that we have going on. We're actually looking at, again, and there was a time through the gas that comes out of the landfill and is destroyed through Injinko, we were receiving something that they called carbon credits, and we got paid for carbon credits by offsetting someone else's, you know, activities, and it looks to us now, so that we can get back into that program again, which could be very beneficial to solid waste, because I think when we did it, we did it for two years before, and I think we made somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 in that three-year period or two-year period.
That's great.
So we're still actively doing the Public Works things and what Public Works does to offset costs to the county.
My last question was just on the...somebody asked me the other day, it was the timeline of the Conley Mill. There was a whole park talk about that, and I didn't have the answer, so I figured I'd ask you while you got to here.
We configured that when we started into that, that it would take us 10 years to dig those two ponds out and have that ready, so we could turn that over to Parks and Recs to be developed.
Parks and Recs, if you look at theirs, I think has something in it to do a master plan for that property. I believe it's in their section of the...so that part of the development, if I remember correctly, is in the Parks and Rec. Let me make sure I'm not misstating something, but yes, we have a master plan actually in '22, and I think we're looking to get mostly grant funding for that. And I think we're looking to get mostly grant funding for that. And then we have a phase one plan in '24 in the current CIP listed. Those are numbers 19 and 20 in the Rec and Park section. And I believe the part that they're looking at, yes, there's the water in front, but there's a lot of woods in the back. And so when they're talking phase one, they're talking that section first, not the front section which has the water.
I, I do have a question on that, I'm glad you brought that up again. We had a lot of discussion before we accepted that property with people in the Delmar area complaining about, in the Conley Mill area complaining about motorcycles. Do we still have that problem?
Time to time. I'm not going to say it stopped, but it has certainly reduced. I reduce it by 95%.
The motorcycles are everywhere.
Oh, no, they're, I see them on the road, but I was wondering about, back there. Okay, any more questions for Mr. Whitelocke? Thank you, Mr. Hastings, Ms. Ackley? All right, thank you, Ms. Olin. Next on the agenda, the Wycomico County Airport, we have Mr. Tony Rudy with the airport.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I guess, well, this is my first capital budget meeting and, you know, we have submitted our request and I guess I'd be open to any questions that the council has.
Can you pull your mask down?
Sure thing.
So, go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just saying, so we submitted our, our capital budget program and I'd be glad to, I'd be open to any questions.
If you want to go through it real quick.
Yeah, you might want to touch on those big tickets over here, Tony. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm the one at those little kid desks over here. But the, yeah, you might want to hit those big ticket items on there, you know, because we've got, you know, the runway extension and the airport technology park and, you know, the ARF and so forth. You know, those are pretty big numbers, so.
And we're going to talk about the taxiway next.
Okay, is there any particular one you want to start with?
If you want, just start at the beginning, so, well, you say this is your first one?
Sure thing, so I have.
Like Mr. McCain said, go to the big ticket items.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll go item by item. The first one is the auto parking attendant, that's a relatively small item funded by CARES. We're hoping to be funded by CARES here very shortly. And our parking concession contract ends at the end of June, so we're getting ready to put this out to bid.
So the parking attendant would be a capital item?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, it's a piece of equipment that will replace the existing parking equipment and also automate our revenue collection.
All right. Keep going.
Next I had was the runway 1432 extension. That's obviously our, our biggest and our, our most pressing program we have. So the total for that project right now, as it stands, is about 32 million over, over five, roughly five years. We're, we're phasing that, we, we feel pretty comfortable with the numbers here. This year's budget, that, I should say, the total budget number is, is pretty close to where we think it's going to be. The big question right now is where the funds are going to be coming from. The federal funding could be lagging a little bit. We should be knowing more in the next month or two, have, have a little more certain numbers on that. It is going to, this project is going to be taking more, I should say, non-federal funds, whether they're local funds or funds we find elsewhere upfront as we wait for the federal funds to kick in. But the, the total funds not coming from federal sources are going to be roughly $13 million over the life of the project.
Okay.
Didn't we, didn't we forward fund part of that last year? Expecting money to come in, you know, like a year lagged? And did, and I guess did that, number one, if we did do that, did that happen?
Yeah, so there, there, there's many pieces of this project, as you can imagine. So we completed our master plan, which was required by the FAA for all the projects we're planning on doing in the next 20 years, more, more or less the next five years initially. Once that was approved, we had to do our environmental work, which was, which was part of not only the runway, but the rest of those projects, so that money funded part of that. We had some preliminary design work that that went to. We're going to have some more ongoing design work. We still have a small amount of those funds available, but they have been directed specifically towards that project.
Ms. Ackley?
Do you have any plans for the, for the interior aesthetics?
Of the terminal building?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, and that's, that's actually in here, but it's projected out a few years. We only have so much money for so many things and.
I just.
Don did some initial things there, but, you know, we have a little ways to go. The, the terminal is aging, but.
Yeah.
That isn't our plans.
I am, last time I was in there, it had picture frames with, they were empty. There were pictures in them and had, in the restaurant, it was like closed, indefinite. The sign was down, so just thought there's something a little bit more welcoming when you come in.
Go ahead.
Questions on the runway? Next project, that is the fiber optic line. Now, this came up, this came up several times. IT brought this to our attention and it also came up with our continuity of operations review. And the airport really only has internet service and, and county connectivity through Comcast. And apparently, a couple of years ago with a traffic accident, they, they took that line down for a couple of days. So we really don't have a redundant system. And the, the thought is to get connected with fiber, which is going to be more reliable, more protected as our primary source, still use Comcast as a backup. Not only for airport needs, but for our existing customers right around the terminal area. And also getting that over to our industrial park for our current customers such as FedEx, Maryland State Police, Purdue, and our newest customer, SRS, running our drone operation. Currently, they only have dial-up service over there now. And if we're going to be attracting any, any new business industry over there, high-speed connection is going to be critical.
When you say the Maryland State Police, you mean the helicopter?
Yes.
Okay.
Trooper four.
All right. Go ahead.
The next project is called Piedmont Obstruction Removal. That really is, it's, it's a separate item, but it is associated with the issue we have with the shortened runway. So we have two power poles that are off, right on Airport Road off the end of the runway that Delmarva Power owns. And they, they won't move those for free. There is a, there is a charge to remove the poles, bury the service underground. And those poles were identified by Piedmont as critical. If, if their aircraft was to depart and lose an engine, they're required, they basically have an imaginary surface that they have to clear and those poles are actually within that surface. So we want to get those cleared actually before we start the runway construction project because the runway will actually be shortened for a period of time until that pavement is built out far enough. So it'll, it will have an impact to their operation. I mean, it has an impact to their operation today, but this is kind of the total package for the runway extension.
Tony, just a quick question, if that's in the, why are we paying for that if it's in the quote airspace? Then doesn't the, doesn't it become an easement?
No, that's a good question. So the, the FAA has airspace that, that the airport has to protect. This is airspace that Piedmont Airlines, each individual airline will determine performance on their aircraft. So in the FAA's eyes, it's not, it's not critical airspace. And we did have an FAA review done on it to see if it penetrated that and it does not. So really, it's, it's, it's for Piedmont's aircraft. It could be for, you know, if another airline was in here as well and their performance was similar, it could affect their performance.
Thank you.
Good question. Go ahead.
The next project I have is industrial park wetland mitigation. This actually involves, the title's a little misleading. It, it does involve a lot of wetland mitigation, but there are also other components to this. So the industrial park, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we have a, a few entities over there now. Our newest one is SRS operating our drone facility. And we have some recent interest in a, an industrial developer to develop a small, roughly 10,000 square foot light industrial manufacturing facility. And we're hoping to get that land cleared for him shortly here, so hopefully it'll still have interest. But one thing we noticed that the sewer doesn't run throughout the entire industrial park. It only runs up one side and then crosses over to where FedEx is right now. So we want to get the, the sewer extended. We want to do some, some tree clearing in there and basically have site-ready areas for developers to come in, which, you know, hopefully create jobs, create revenue for the airport and increase our tax base.
Okay.
Next item I have was the ARF building. And that one is, we're hoping will be fully funded by CARES. And that is, we had a recent review with Fisher Architects and Delta Airport Consultants to go over, kind of page-by-page review of the plans that we had in place just to make sure they meet all the FAA requirements. Because with the CARES money, it looks like we're going to have to meet all of their normal design requirements. So we had a good meeting just the other week and Fisher's going to go back, make a few changes and then we're going to submit that officially to the FAA for our grant addendum for the, for the CARES. And that should be fully funded by that, we're hoping.
Okay, thank you.
The snow removal equipment building, again, this is another project we had identified being funded with CARES funds. Any airport that has snow removal equipment is really required by FAA to keep this equipment undercover and in heated area, so it's ready to go. Unfortunately, we're not in that position right now. Our equipment's kind of scattered. We do have it plugged in, in areas with block heaters to, to keep it ready when needed. But it's not the ideal situation and, and this facility would, would house that, would enable us to work on that equipment, you know, out of the weather and so forth.
Why is that so much more than the ARF building?
It's a much larger building.
It is larger.
The ARF building is basically two fire trucks and some equipment. This, you're talking multiple pieces, you know, plows, sweepers, blowers.
Good. Any more questions? All right.
The next one I have is rehabilitate taxiway Alpha Phase 2B. So you may recall, the taxiway Alpha project's been going on for about a year now. The first portion of it was funded with an FAA grant along with our terminal apron rehabilitation. And that was a full-depth reconstruction, so it was quite expensive. The second phase was a mill and overlay and we used our FAA Airport Improvement Program money to complete that this year. There's a small piece left that's, again, reconstruction, so a little bit more expensive. And that project was, was designed, you know, using all the FAA standards and we did submit just recently a grant addendum through the CARES Act to get that funded. So we're hoping to hear something very soon from the FAA on that. And, and we could take that to the contractor, hopefully he'll still hold his prices. His bid price is two years old now, but he's been really good to work with and we're hoping we can complete that starting this spring.
Okay.
Next one on my list is the car rental car wash. So we're in the process now of, of soliciting for car rentals. Their, their existing contract is, is about 10 years expired. So we were talking to them about this time last year about going forward with new rates, new charges. And then COVID hit, so that we kind of put that on the back burner. But there has, there has been some interest, you're probably aware of, Hertz has left, Hertz filed bankruptcy. They did leave several airports. So we still have Enterprise and Avis and they've been engaged with us. And we've been working with purchasing, we're going to, we're going to put out a proposal and hopefully continue the existing, well, we'll, we'll have to see who responds to the proposal. But the one thing they did ask for, they wanted some storage area because right now they can only clean their cars basically in a parking lot. They have a shop vac plugged into a single outlet that's in the back of an airport storage building and it's not an ideal situation. So they went from wanting, a couple of years ago, wanting a, a storage facility to actual, an actual car wash facility. And this would be paid for through their customers through what's called a customer facility charge, similar to a passenger facility charge we have for people that are flying an aircraft. And the, the thought is to put this, it will also have another benefit in that if we put this over in the industrial park with the new water line going in, it'll keep a, a larger volume of water moving through that system.
Okay.
I, I have a question, just maybe broader question. In the, the funding categories, when it talks about what the federal grant is, 11 million, et cetera, a lot of the projects that we're talking about, like especially the runway, which you were talking about was forward funding, is the reimbursement on the forward funding, is that reflected in these federal grants of 11 million?
No, it's not.
Yeah, because what I'm, I'm finding the CIP this year to be a little bit difficult because it looks like we're spending a lot of money. And I think it might help, especially with the CARES funding, to find some type of a, a revenue line in here that says, hey, we may be spending 20 million here, but don't forget that in '22 or '23, we're going to see, you know, 8 million coming back from the federal government. I, I, I can't put together between federal, state, new money, old money, pay-go and enterprise funding. I can't tell how that plays into the individual projects that are in the CIP.
I agree with you.
Yeah. So I'm just curious, that, you know, there's 11 million on federal and I, I'm thinking, well, is that 11 that they've already committed? Or would that include, or will the 4 million or the 6 million in '23 and '24, will that be the, what they've paid us back?
Are you talking specifically for the runway?
I could say, yeah, we could, we could say the runway, yeah, because those are big numbers, 13 million, 6 million, 2 million, yeah.
But it would be all of the funding?
Yeah, yeah, this, this is all of the funding, the, the federal funding that's in here is, is not, is not reimbursable. Because if you look at the total project cost, 32 million. If you add up all the, the federal, the local, state funding, anything else, that will total up to the 32 million.
All right, because I, I just, I, I just wonder, you know, how we actually get our, get our heads around how far down, how much spending we're actually doing and how much really, you know, we're not really getting that out of control.
Well, and again, that's the attempt is to, the attempt is to try to show you how much is actually coming out of our coffers. That's why there's the bond money and then there's grant. And so the grant is our estimate as to what we think the federal government is going to give us in any given year. As you know, this is a planning document, those numbers move because we're not, you know, these numbers, when we submitted it, were our best estimates at that point in time. Those estimates can change. So ultimately, what ends up happening is, is when we submit our budget, we put in the next best estimate as we have for the current year. Because we can't, you know, we, we've created these numbers back in October, November and I could update this every day if you need it, if, if it, if we had to. We can't, that just, you would be spending so much time just updating this document. It's a point-in-time document. And again, our budget is a point-in-time document as to, that's what we think we're getting at that point in time. When we submitted this, this was where we think the numbers are coming. As Tony stated, we believe that we will have a better idea by the time we're submitting you our actual budget, which has the capital project section in it that shows where we think all those numbers will be. that shows where we think all those numbers will be for fiscal '22. We don't believe the number in total is wrong. We may have to shift around the funding at that point in time.
Does that help, Mr. Cannon?
To a certain degree. It's just, and I recognize that things are going to change, but, you know, for us to make a calculated decision as to whether, you know, we think we're safe in moving forward as we are, you know, I don't know if that's that easy to do. And we really don't know how much of it may be coming back. My concern also on the bigger picture is that if I'm reading this right, we're doing $49.2 million. We're bonding $49.2 million as a whole, outside, not the airport, but as a whole. And then we're doing a $5.4 million from Pago, which is about a total of 50, about 54 million.
And that is the conversation we had with you in the fall.
Right, I understand.
That '22 is a huge year. And things are looking better, not great still, but better with our revenue projections. But in total, we knew that there were some major projects in '22. And the question becomes is whether or not we want to fund those major projects. You know, airport, if we start down the path of this, or continue down the path of this airport runway, that's a major project, that's a long-term commitment that we are making as a county. We have started down the path of a public safety building. We have made commitments to the Board of Education for some of their projects. So again, this was the conversation we had in the fall, that when you saw this, '22 was going to be very big. And this is very big.
Well, I commend you for, you know, having the forward thinking, because it is a good time to be borrowing. You know, we're at record-low rates, and these projects aren't going to go away. And they don't get cheaper as time goes on, so. But you went, like I said, you went through all that in the fall. While we have you, Ms. Olin, I do have a quick question. And it's not germane to this year, but when you look at the Pago, and when you, you know, and that's typically a relatively small number. I say small number, you know, it's 100,000, 200,000 or so each year. Until, I was just curious, why in 2025, it was like 1.2 million? Which seemed, you know, seemed unusual, was kind of an outlier for Pago funding. You know, so what was it that we projected there?
I would have to go back and look at the actual spreadsheet. I can make a note and get back to you.
Yeah, that'd be fine. I was just curious, when I saw that, it was kind of an outlier.
Let me make a note of that, and I will get back to you.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Next item was the aircraft rescue and firefighting vehicle support equipment. When we bid the fire truck, we also bid support equipment. FAA requires us to bid the two separately, so the same contractor doesn't get, you know, the full bid. We did not get any responses on that. And the money we had tied up with the MAA grant and the FAA grant, or the CARES money, pretty much covered the fire truck. So we're looking to go back out to bid next year to get some basic tools that we don't currently have, such as a rescue tool, airbags, and some other miscellaneous equipment.
I know we discussed this previously, but I don't see it on my sheet here. After the car wash, I see the passenger parking lot extension.
That's not in 2022.
So he has gone, he has gone through the list for everything associated with 2022. Again, '23 and out, there are additional projects. I would say at this point in time, as you know, those are our projection years. They're our best estimate as to what year they'll fall in. If you had any specific questions about the list that you were presented, I would say instead of running through each one, you ask those questions.
Sounds good. Does anybody have any more questions for Tony, for Ms. Olin, Mr. Hastings?
What again is the deadline for the federal spending for CARES Act and those kind of funds?
So we have to have that money spent by July of '24.
'24? Because wasn't it supposed to be the end of last year?
It's a different part of CARES.
It's a different part now?
So the airport CARES has much longer deadline for making those, for spending those funds. The December 30th, 2020 number was a different section, more in tune with buying PPE and that kind of stuff.
But that was extended as well?
Yes. But you didn't, we didn't get any additional funding. You just got additional time to spend.
To spend it.
We did, I believe we did a fantastic job of spending, so there's not a whole lot that we're spending in the last, in the extension.
Ms. Hastings, you good?
No, I'd say spend away for the federal dollars. Can't guarantee things are going to be there in the future.
May not see that again. Any more questions? Okay. Tony, do you want to talk about Taxi G, Taxiway G, the project funding?
Sure. Okay, so this one, I'm sorry if it's a little confusing. So we had initially, our thought was, we have a fence that comes across the taxiway now that gets down to the drone facility. And the initial thought was to put a gate in there, an automated gate, that when a drone comes up to it, someone can, you know, hit a button remotely, open that gate, let them through, and then the gate closes. However, looking into this, the clear span that we need, we need to clear 120-foot width. We do make a double cantilevered gate that will clear that area. But as you could imagine, it's an expensive gate to install. We also had issues with getting a remote control unit that would work properly the way we intended. And then there's the thing of having these huge gates to maintain them over the years. You know, it's a big structure. They are sturdy, but just like any gate over time, they do flex, they bend. They could get damaged with the woods around there. You could have a tree fall on them. So we came up with the idea of, we have to clear the trees there to get that width in there. Let's clear the trees an extra 10 feet, put a fence where we would have cleared to. That way, we can maintain a clear line of sight on both sides of the fence for security reasons. And that project would only cost around 85,000 as opposed to 220,000. So we had, we had 220,000 in the budget under general obligation bonds. So rather than bonding for that, we had the 85,000 actually in Pago money. And that was earmarked for the FedEx apron rehabilitation, which we found out, actually, it's not an airport responsibility that is on FedEx or that leasehold, which is unusual, because most other properties on the airport, the airport maintains. So our plan was to use that money already allocated in Pago to proceed with this fence project.
This is similar to what we did in the fall with one of the GOB projects, where we had originally set up in the budget that we were going to bond something, made the decision that we weren't bonding it, and that we would replace it with Pago. So I think we did that back in, like, October, November timeframe for the, I think, the GOB roof. So it's a similar concept, similar, we would come forward with similar legislation, where we would be switching the funding source, but not adding any additional funding to the budget to accomplish this project.
So we're amending the budget?
We're, yes, we would be amending Page 184 to be such that the, we would be removing the FedEx concrete ramp rehab project, and we would be reallocating those funds to the taxiway G fence project. And we would no longer be borrowing in '20. We didn't borrow, it wasn't part of the project that went forward in borrowing. So we would just be reallocating like we did with that other project, very similar to what we did in the fall.
So Ms. Harley, we'd have to have a public hearing on this?
We do. It requires one week's worth of advertising, so we can have that the next meeting on February the 16th.
At the February 14th meeting?
16th.
Any questions and more discussion on this? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have the airport water main extension project funding. Ms. Catherine McAllister with George Miles and Bure. Good evening.
So I'm Catherine McAllister with George Miles and Bure. So this is a couple of change orders that have come up as part of this project. Mainly they're a result of, in, if you recall, I guess it was in February or March of last year, we had to kind of halt things a little bit to get the agreements finalized with the city of Salisbury. So this is a result of that, those remobilization costs and the costs for increased materials and technical work that had to be done. So the total, if you go to the budget sheet, which may be a good place to start, from MDE, which I think I showed that to all of you guys, that spreadsheet. So MDE does provide a contingency percentage for the construction. It's about 5% of the actual construction cost. So typically in projects, you know, we use that funds, you know, to cover any change orders in the field, to cover that. These are a little bit unique in that they were sort of more a result of, you know, the agreement that had to be done, work that had to be added. So they have, if we were to approve both of these, we have already exceeded the contingency funds that are left from MDE. So I have been talking with MDE, actually, for the last two months, trying to get this finalized. And it's pretty much, they want to know that the county has approved them. They want to see signed approvals before they'll actually complete their final review on what they're willing to cover. So that's where the additional contingencies has been asked. So the two change orders in discussion, one is the cost for the suspension of work. So that was when Bramble actually had bid this job in June of 2019. And they hold their bids for 90, and they were even willing to extend that for additional 45 days, which put us in about the winter of, you know, early January, 2020-ish. So they were told to, you know, proceed at that point, and then they stopped and held there, you know, didn't do any work until we got the agreement with the city of Salisbury. So that 45,000 and 34, $45,000, 34 is the cost of that. It's the cost of their material, their labor going in two different years. It's the cost of just materials going up. I know steel has gone up a lot. And there was a pretty detailed breakdown of the other items.
And we appreciate you, you know, unfortunately, that 45 could have been avoided. I mean, I know that's not anything to do with you, but, you know, that's unfortunate, because that's 45,000 our taxpayers shouldn't have to be paying, but.
Yeah, yeah, and that's another reason why I think MDE really hasn't commented on whether they want it coming out of construction contingency costs, because it's not really construction, you know, costs. The second one is the higher one, it's the 94,000. That is the work directive, so that is related to the changes that were made to meet city of Salisbury requirements. And they are, you know, we've gone through these in details, detail with the engineering group, and they are all very good changes. It just follows more of the city's standards. The major item was the generator. And we had put out there just a portable generator to deal with the chlorine building, but now this generator will also handle that pump station. And from an engineering technical standpoint, I have to completely agree, because if you're providing water during a power outage, you want to be able to pump it out. So that will, you know, that's a, it's a change that you guys will see the advantages on the technical side of that one. So I didn't know if there's any specific questions about the change orders themselves.
Ms. Ackley, did you have a question? I saw you reaching for the mic. Does anyone have a question? Mr. Holloway?
Yeah.
So this comes out of our contingency fund?
My understanding is that yes, this would come out of our contingency fund.
So the plan is, this will allow us to sign these change orders and get Bramble moving forward with these items. And I will still continue talking to MDE to try and use as much money from MDE, from the loan funding, as possible.
When the, it's one thing I think we need to add when we do this, we got to do legislation on it, a resolution, is that correct? You know, in the agreement, it goes, if you go back to it, it says, if the state of Maryland allows the area to be served, to be expanded in the future, which means by any privately-owned land shall be annexed into the city, which we knew that, and private landowners shall be required to reimburse the county for a proportionate share of the construction airport water system cost based on the number of equivalent dwelling units. I think we kind of need to put that in our resolution so that it, the taxpayers will be reimbursed for this in case it is opened up to the general public, I guess, or landowners, so.
So that was a statement in the agreement?
Pardon me?
That was from the agreement with the city?
That was in the agreement from the city.
Yeah, and I would think that would be total project cost when you're done. So any other change orders, you know, I would think that would, the total project cost would be at the end of the job, once you know.
Yeah, what I'm saying is for this $200,000 we're going to be spending. I think we need to, is that allowable?
I'm not sure if I'm following.
Mr. Taylor?
It's a dedicated line. I'm a little, not sure if I followed.
Well, it says, it's supposed to be a dedicated line. But it also says, if the state of Maryland allows the area to be served, to be expanded in the future, then any privately-owned land shall be annexed into the city, and a private landowner shall be required to reimburse the county for a proportionate share of the construction. So in other words, the state can open it up to private landowners.
I'm just trying to figure what's the relationship with what Ms. McAllister's.
I mean, I don't believe at this point in time, we can, we need these funds now, and that so far in the future, there's nothing, again, if it opens up, that's in the agreement. That would be at that point in time, a reimbursable cost coming back to the county as a, an amount.
For the amount of money we've spent so far, but this is 200,000 more. What I'm saying, this should be put in our resolution.
It would be included as the project in total. So we would be able to pull the project in total and know that this amount was part of that total cost.
Could I make just a suggestion?
Mr. Taylor?
I think the resolution could just simply reference the agreement that Mr. Holloway is referring to.
I just want to be assured that the county will get their money back if it ever is opened up. It might not ever be opened up, but it may be, is what I'm trying to say.
Can just be a reference to it.
Right, okay.
As a reminder.
Yeah.
If it's ever opened up, the county would have to make that request. The state just doesn't come down and say, we're going to open up that line. The county.
I understand that. I'm just wanting to make sure that it's in there, so.
Absolutely, I would think that would refer to the final cost.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be lost in the end.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
So just regarding the contingencies, so there are still about 89,000 remaining in the MDE contingency fund bucket. This 200,000 will cover any cost that MDE is not willing to cover.
Okay.
And we put more in it than just these two change orders. There's a, some additional engineering costs that have happened, but we don't yet have that number. We didn't want to come back to you, hopefully, you know, two, three, four, five times. We wanted to try to limit the number of times we come back to you to make amendments related to this project. So we put an estimate in for that, and then we also just put an estimate in for, you know, any other potential, because we are now basically out of contingency with the state, giving us a little bit of room for any potential other change orders that might come down instead of having to come back to you each time. And that's how the $200,000 number was arrived at.
Ms. Harley, does this require a public hearing?
No, this is going to be a contingency transfer. So counsel can just, if everyone agrees to the 200,000, schedule this for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, February 16th?
Yes.
Any questions? Any more discussion? All right. Is everyone agreeable to this? Mr. McCain? Mr. Cannon? Ms. Ackley? Mr. Holloway? Okay. February 16th it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have the. Next, we're going to have the discussion on the Charter Review Committee, and discuss the appointment process. Ms. Hurley, do you have a list of the considerations to go over?
There is an outline in the brief book of items that we talked about at our last work session. Some additional considerations were brought to my attention, so I did put them at the end of the outline, and, you know, council can, you know, talk about those and, you know, just go from there.
And I know, I talked to Mr. Hastings earlier today, and he requested a short meeting for the February 16th meeting, because he thinks there's going to be a lot of discussion, because we're getting a lot of names submitted, so... So now we're open for discussion on how we want to handle it, knowing that we are getting a lot of names.
To just, for my own clarification, are we, so we're talking about 15 people as a maximum on this committee, of which each council members choose two names or help? What's, what's the process there? Do we vote, individually vote, or does the individual council member?
One of the recommendations was, like we did previously, discuss, each council member pick two members, and then the council will choose the 15th. We don't want to go over 15 members, because we think that's too, too many people. And then there are several council members that discussed having an alternate list.
Mr. President, just for clarification, I think the 15th member at the last work session was discussed that that would come from the county executive.
County executive?
Yeah.
But we would approve it?
Correct, it would be confirmed by council.
Right.
Now, yeah, I need clarification too, when you said each council person, two people, were you, were you talking about recommendations? Not, you weren't, you weren't insinuating each council person just picked two people? Or were you? I'm not sure.
Well, there was discussion to nominate, each council member, basically nominate two people, and then we would discuss, do we want that person, and come up with a consensus on that.
Yeah, because I guess that's, that's the challenge for us, I guess, you know, how do we reach, how do we reach consensus on the candidates? Because I do think we're going to have, which is a good thing, I think we're going to have a lot of candidates. We're getting a lot of interest, which is good, and a lot of good qualified candidates. So, you know, how do we get from, let's just say theoretically, we have 25 applicants, including our recommendations, you know, how do we get from that to 15?
Do we, again, when you said 25 applicants?
Mr. Holloway?
Okay, got it. You're saying 25 applicants plus our recommendations, are you saying that somebody does not have to apply to be recommended for the committee, or should they have to reply?
No, I'm saying, you know, we've opened it up to the public, so we've got, we're getting these applicants, we've made recommendations as well, some of those are probably one and the same, but some aren't. But at the end, we might have, you know, I'm saying, we might have 30, we might have whatever, but we're going to have something more than 15 that appears very obvious, yeah, so how do we get from that?
Yeah, I think...
That bucket to 15?
Gosh. President Dodd said that we, we probably should consider, each one of us considering, each district considering two people, and then an alternate, because in the experiences I've seen the past two Charter Review Committees, they had people drop out that didn't fulfill their, fulfill their duties, and if you pick the alternates to begin with, along with the two that you choose to be on the committee, then they have the opportunity to come to the meetings, or at least read the minutes, if they've not been to the meeting. So in case somebody does not show up, or, you know, health reasons, or whatever happens, they can't come, work reasons, that an alternate can step in. So I, I think that would be a wise thing to do.
Well, we still need to identify how we're going to prioritize the list, if it's 25 or 30 people, and we're going to vote on it, or we're going to just have a list and everybody do their prioritization from 1 through 25, or whatever the list would be.
So you're saying that we need to vote each individual member on, is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that, but it's a possibility, that's an option.
Ms. Hurley, I think you gave us a little bit of a briefing a decade ago, I think, didn't you look back and say that they, I think they, isn't that what, I think they did, they sort of voted on each candidate?
Yes, so, and speaking to the former council administrator, council as a body just went through each applicant and decided that way.
But how, but how did they decide? When you say they decided that way, what was that way?
He didn't go into, I mean, just reviewing the resume, he didn't go into details as far as the discussions, you know, what the criterias were that the body was looking for at the time, but he did, he did indicate that council selected the individuals as a body. And around robin type situation. I mean, Mr. Holloway, you were on the council at the time, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Is that your recollection of how the process went?
What I, what I remember of it is, you know, we each put our name, put the names in of folks we wanted. We didn't have as many applicants as we thought we would have. I think when they find out it's going to take a year, it kind of thins things out a little bit, but we put, put two names in, but we did not choose an alternate, and I think that was probably one of the things we should have done, so. So, it's, do we vote on each member? That's what I guess we're trying to decide now, or does the, each council person put two names forward and that's it? Or do we approve each name? I guess that's a question on the table right this minute, right?
Ms. Ackley?
How many applicants do we have?
Ms. Hurley, how many do we have so far?
I would say at least 15, and I didn't...
Including, including what the council members picked.
I think some are redundant, though.
Some maybe.
The councilman picked, shouldn't they have, if they're going to be on it, shouldn't they be submitting their names?
Yes.
They may, I don't know, I'm not sure whether they have or not.
I think they should.
So we can see their resume, at least, then...
Right, a bio. Yeah, I mean, if, even if the councilmen, council people want to pick two people for themselves, they should still submit their name.
That's correct. When we originally discussed this, everybody threw in two names, but we didn't get a bio with that, so they should be required to submit a bio.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm not so sure about that, only, I'm only saying that because I think, or at least I know in my case, I checked with those people to see, you know, if they were interested, before, you know, I didn't want to put their names in without knowing they're interested, but when we did that, at that time, we just said each council person to recommend, suggest two people. So now to go back to them, I mean, some of them, we might, we already have that, but to go back to them now, or you're going to have to make an effort, make sure you go back to those people.
But if we're voting on, if every council person is voting on every person, we need some kind of a bio or a resume. I mean, you might know them, I might not, you know, I might know them and you may not, so...
But Ms. Hurley, you might want to send a reminder out to us to make sure we go back to our, the people, you know, as they...
And then check to make sure that they didn't already submit an application or a resume. Mr. Hastings, do you have a comment?
I was going to say, I think, I think we're probably going to have close to 30 or more, I mean, just the folks that I've seen coming in so far, and then the ones who I know are going to apply or in the process, I mean, I think it counted like 26, 28 people. I'm sure there's probably going to be more. I will say too, also, you know, as much as possible, we should try to make sure that the applicants reflect the community, which is always an important goal.
Right, I agree with you. Mr. Cannon?
Yes, I, I'm not so sure, I'm not so sure you want a resolution for the appointment to be made on March 2nd, because anything, anything happens between now and then, we realize we need more time. We've just, this sounds to me like you're making a resolution that has to be passed by the 2nd.
I think that was the goal, and the reason for that is because it does take such a long time to review the charter, so the sooner the better.
Well, what I would suggest is that once all these names come in, all the biographies come in, we're going to be able to, we're going to have very little time in here to go through a formal work session on a lot of these names. I would say that the council members should come back with 20 of their top...
Their top 20.
So that each council member has 20. That number should be shared with, with all the other council members, if we can legally do that, that's not a closed session, is it, if we share that type of information?
It, it would be discussed in a closed session.
Well, what I mean, is it a violation of any, any Open Meetings Act if we were to, in other words, we all shared, we all combined seven lists, and those seven lists, part of what we each put together, each went to the council person, is that any violation of Open Meetings Act, that we behind the scenes have shared these names with each other?
I'm going to redirect that to Mr. Taylor. Do you see that as a concern, if they were to share that by email?
I, I don't think so, because I think that the discussion could be in closed session, administrative closed session, I think. I'd like to double check that.
Because I think the best way to do it would be for us...
My answer is tentative, but I, I believe that that could be done that way.
Okay, so if we're going to meet in closed session, then we could each bring to the table 20 names, and then somehow or other way have to parse through that and say, "Okay, who," or Laura, ahead of time, could look at that and go, "Okay, six out of 70 of you picked this individual," and hopefully, we'll probably have about 10 at least, where we all agreed on the same people. And then we'd only have to work through probably about 10 more, five of those being alternates, or however many alternates we choose. And we can, what's that type of voting call, which I really don't like?
Yeah.
Rank choice.
What's it?
Rank.
Rank choice.
Rank choice? Well, we may have to go through this rank choice for the rest of it, right?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think that's a good idea.
I guess the only thing we want to avoid is, you want to avoid a situation where, I mean, Councilman Cannon's recommended two people, and, but then at the end of the day, we appoint our appointments, and neither one of these people are on there.
That's, that's...
I personally would, I personally would not care about that.
That's, that's what I'm kind of thinking about, you're saying, us bringing in, everybody choosing 20 names. I thought the purpose of this is we were supposed, council manic districts, we were supposed to try to pick two people from our district, and the at-large council people were to pick whoever they wanted to, and the whole county at large, and then we put those names together, and we, of course, we would have our other names if we did not agree, if I put two names forward and you didn't agree on one of them, or vice versa, then we could go to the other names we had from our district.
Well, yeah, I, I think that the choice of two per council members was simply a courtesy. I don't think it really was trying to establish any formal process, whereas you had to have two from District 1, you had to have two from District 2 and 3, because, believe me, you could get some very qualified people, we might very much regret that fact and have to leave someone out simply because they weren't in a political district. I'd rather have the best people as opposed to, you're not necessarily representing that district, because these aren't social or legislative issues, these are people who are going to make decisions on the, on the efficiency of government, between the executive and legislative branch of government, period. And you want the smartest minds available. I don't, I don't care if they live, you know, in Parsonsburg, or if they live in Sharp Town, or where they live. I'll take all 20 from Salisbury, as long as I know that those are the best people we have.
But, Mrs. Hurley, I think that's the way we did it before, we picked districts, correct?
That was not mentioned by Mr. McCain.
Yeah, but I believe...
And looking at the people that were on when I was there, I don't think they were in, they represented districts, Joe, I really don't.
They may have not done, but that's the way we worked it before, to pick from districts.
Were you on that committee?
Yes, as a courtesy, I think, again, that it really wasn't so much that they, you were picking people from your district, but each district representative was allowed two choices.
That's fine, I mean, you're at large, so, you know, if I want to pick two people from my district, that's fine, you know, you can pick them from anywhere in the county.
Maybe we should just wait and see how many we get.
Well, we're just discussing it right now, with throwing the options on the table. Mr. Hastings?
I was just going to say, well, of course, all the best people reside in District 4, we all know that, but...
Of course.
I know, I'm not think, I'm probably going to look at my district, I mean, I know most of the folks in my district more, I'm going to probably, I'm going to come prepared to advocate for the best folks in my district, but then I'm also going to take a good understanding and kind of rank in my own mind where are the, the best minds, I think, because that's really what we do want to get.
And John, you know, don't take this the wrong way, but what you're saying is, we could end up with 20 people from a municipality, and nobody from the rural areas, or nobody that's a farmer, or no, so that's...
Well, again, Joe, it, it has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with planning zoning, it has nothing to do with legislative matters or social matters, it's just people who are going to sit down and decide how efficiently the legislative and executive branch of this government's going to work. If every 20 person, if every one of these 20 people from Sharp Town, I'm okay with that. You know, if we happen to have a real huge group, you know, a, hey, what do they call those, when you get a whole bunch of geniuses together? But, huh? But anyway, if you have this block of individuals...
Something you don't know anything about, right? County council thing you don't know anything about.
I'm not part of it, obviously, but if, if they all happen to live in one area, I'm okay with that, let's just make sure we have the, the best.
Well, my district is very rural, and I have a lot of farmers, and I'm going to try my best to make sure that we're represented with farmers. As a matter of fact, there's one that I've been trying my best to get them to put their application, and they are interested, but I don't think they've submitted their application yet.
President, Dodd, did we, did we talk about a chair?
We haven't talked about a chair yet.
I, with all due respect to the farmers too, Larry, I don't think it matters whether it's a farmer, or whether it's a, you know, a contractor.
That's your feeling, I understand.
Well, we're looking for somebody that has some knowledge of how, how government would effectively work, if it turns out to be farmer, that's great.
Well, I certainly hope the farmers know what's going on in this county.
I'm sure they do.
At least the ones that I'm, I'm talking to do.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I don't think you need to isolate it by a job description, or a demographic, or anything like that.
Going back to what Mr. Holloway said, he's talking about diversity and...
And I think, but I think we will accomplish that via the fact, we got, we got seven council people, we do want the best, I mean, I agree with Mr. Cannon, we want the best people, but I think in that process of getting the best people, we, it will be spread among the, they're not all going to be from the same district, you know, they're going to be from different parts of the county, so I think, especially with 15 representatives, so...
And then the way we're talking, I don't see us stuck on a certain individual, or a different demographic.
I do want to come back to the, the alternates, just from the standpoint, I mean, I think it's fine to have like one or two, I mean, I think you mentioned like four or five alternates or something, you know, I mean, just having one or two...
I was talking, I was talking about each councilman having one alternate.
No, I, I, actually, I would disagree, I mean, we don't, why do we need that many?
That would be seven.
Yeah, you're right, they're supposed to be making a commitment, so, you know, we shouldn't, you, it's fine to have one or two, just in case for some, somebody has an emergency and they get pissed, and then they can't.
It might be interesting to see what the attendance was in the past years, because I know sometimes people had a hard time getting to the meetings, so...
Yeah, but I think something like this, people, it's, it's a commitment, they're supposed to be making a commitment, so we don't need, we don't need seven alternates.
They should come up with some guidelines as far as attendance, so...
Well, that brings up another thing, that brings up, should we have a pledge that the members of this committee take? I understand that when they did the electrical board here a few weeks ago, they, they had those members of that committee take a pledge, so I don't know whether that's something we may want to consider.
I don't know.
Well, I think that with the committee, Mrs. Hurley, with the committee, or Bob Taylor, would the committee themselves have some guidelines, they establish, such as saying, "Once you miss three meetings, you're out." I know that normally with committees or commissions, they do pick their own chairperson, they decide what chairperson they want or they don't want, in the same sense, they could possibly pass bylaws, or is that our responsibility to pass bylaws, without getting too serious about it?
I, I don't believe the Charter Review Committee had bylaws in the past, I haven't come across any, perhaps because it's a temporary committee, I mean, it's only going to be appointed for approximately, you know, 12 to 14 months.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I wouldn't want them to get in trouble, whereas if somebody is obviously, hasn't shown up for three or four meetings, somebody has to, to, to say, "You're, you're out."
Yeah, I think once, my thoughts on that would be, once a chairman is selected, then the chairman can discuss those rules with the committee.
All right, and normally the chairperson is, is appointed by the committee.
And that was another question, one council member thought that we should appoint the chair, and you're saying that the committee should, so...
We, we should be staying at, we should be staying out of this as much as, you know, our, our job is, charter says, we're to appoint a commission. Once we appoint that commission, they should then elect them, like all commissions elect a chair, and then they need to set their, that commission needs to set their guidelines and et cetera, not, not us.
How's everybody feel about that?
Yep, hands off.
My concern is that they wouldn't all...
Can you take your mask down?
My concern is they wouldn't all know one another, and they're going to pick a chair from there?
Yeah, we're not going to know them all either.
That's fine, I mean, that's...
Happens all the time. Happens all the time.
It's gonna be a group that they're gonna meet every day, so among them, they have to pick somebody in charge. I mean, we're not gonna know them either, so why should we, like Bill said, we should be all up with as much as possible. We pick the members, put them there, and they do their thing.
Mr. Hastings?
I was just gonna say also, just so it's said, we need to also make sure, you know, we're the legislative body. We're talking about up to 15 people, of which 15 of those people come from the legislative side of this. This is, the, the point of, the bigger piece within this charter review is obviously to understand the roles between the executive and legislative. We need to make sure that we've got representation on the executive side. I think that's one thing that we're gonna have to try to work harder to make sure, is that we have a good voice speaking for the executive branch.
Okay.
And I would only add that the word I was thinking of was brain trust. I knew it was out there somewhere. It's a brain trust.
Could I just make one comment?
Mr. Taylor?
I've looked at how Frederick County-
Can you pull your mask down?
Yeah, I've looked at how Frederick County did their charter review recently.
Sir.
And I think that, I don't, I don't know that this is the majority way, but it's the way I think they did it. They essentially selected the chair, and I think gave some guidelines to the committee, because you're gonna essentially have a group of people who don't really know each other, and really aren't even familiar with the process of what they're doing. And I think it gets things started on a much evener, more even keel to do that. I mean, they're really there to review the charter, and I think if you put the ground rules in effect in terms of how they should be organized, and, for example, if somebody misses meetings on a regular basis, then that they would be more or less automatically removed.
Well, I'll say again, we need to stay out of it. Our job, the Charter says we're to appoint a commission, and they need to set their, how they're gonna conduct their business, and select their chair, et cetera.
I disagree. I think the council should pick the chair, and it's not, it's not anything about being into it, but I think it'll move the process a lot farther, because they'll spend their first meeting or so deciding who's gonna be the chair. In fact, their first meeting probably won't even have a chair, so I don't know how that will, how that will make the first meeting all that effective. So I think that, my thoughts are, they should, that we should pick the chair.
I agree. I think we should pick the chair to give them guidelines and some kind of structure whenever they get started, because-
We've never picked a chair for a commission that I know of. I mean, we appoint commissions all the time, and we don't pick the chairs.
All right. You don't want to pick a chair. Ernie?
Yes.
John?
No.
Nicole? All right, the majority has it. Mr. Taylor brought up-
Majority has what? I didn't, majority has what?
It was four that the committee will choose the chair.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I didn't know. Okay, I didn't hear.
Wait a minute, who will choose the chair?
The majority said that the committee will choose the chair. That was their consensus.
Okay.
Just to touch on what Mr. Taylor said, the guidelines, if they were issued guidelines, that's all they are, is guidelines. They, they can look at them, and they don't have to follow them. It's not the law. But it, for somebody that doesn't know what's going on, it may help them. It may benefit them. So I don't think it would hurt to give them some guidelines and let them decide if they want to keep them or not.
That's fine.
Yep, agree.
How does everybody feel about that?
That's fine.
I think, Ms. Hurley, you do have some guidelines, don't you?
I do.
Yes.
So being we're taking consensus votes here, what have we, have we voted on how we're gonna, how the council is gonna pick the members? Are we gonna each council member bring two people in, and one alternate? Or is each council person gonna bring in two people, and then we're just gonna have two or three alternates? Well, I guess we need to take a consensus vote on that.
But I think it was decided that if I submitted two names, the majority wouldn't, may not want that, those two names. So I don't, is that set in stone that whoever we-
That's what I'm just asking. I mean, we-
Right, I thought we decided we were gonna submit the-
Rank.
Yeah, do the rank, take those 20, you know, everybody puts their 20 in or whatever, rank them, and narrow it down, you know, you know, and then we might have a, like I said, then we might pick the, you know, we want to pick one or two alternates.
From what's left out of the 15?
From what's left, right, exactly, you know.
Are you okay with that, Joe?
Don't sound like I've got much support on it.
Ernie, are you okay with that? Bill, I think you're okay. Exactly.
I would think, by the way, up to, maybe up to three alternates, you know, maybe no more than that.
Three to five, I don't have a problem with five, but we can decide then.
I think three's a plenty. Like I said, they, they need to commit to it, and, you know, and that's why they put their names in.
Yeah.
So-
I would just hate to see that several people drop out, and we don't have enough alternate names.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Hopefully not.
It didn't happen under the last commission. They didn't have any issues with that. I mean, they, I know, they, they take that job very seriously, so.
Well, I thought the discussion was that there were people that weren't showing up.
I don't, I don't think it was the charter commission.
I can't hear you.
Three people that weren't consistently there.
You might always have two, you know, I don't consider that a lot out of 15, so.
Yeah, well, we can discuss it.
Did we want to talk, did we want to talk about the pledge, or is that a dead issue also?
I, I don't have a problem with the pledge.
What, what kind of pledge does you have in mind?
Well, basically, that they would, you know, remain independent, and, so, I guess we could look at the pledge that Paul did for the electrical board and draft something off that.
You talking about swearing them in?
No, no, just, I guess, I guess you could swear them in.
Like a commitment.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Taylor?
Well, yeah, I think, again, I, as I said, I looked at Frederick County, and I know they used a pledge.
They did?
Yeah, essentially a pledge of impartiality, that they weren't representing any group or group of people, and would try, try to do the best for the county as a whole. And Frederick County's got a pledge, and-
Be nice if we have one tonight to look at, but, that's all right. Did you have, Mr. Hastings?
No, I had no strong feelings on the pledge part. I think people are, people are gonna speak for what they're gonna speak for, or the groups that they care about regardless, but, you know, I think, to Mr. Holloway's point, I do think that that's important, to be able to have folks start it off and understand, hey, this is a new process with, we really want to have, you know, substantive information and be as non- impartial as possible, but we can't control what people will do.
It would give them something to think about in the beginning. Did we need a consensus? Mr. McCain?
I mean, they're gonna have, I mean, you know, we should give them guidelines or whatever, as a pledge is part of that. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure why they're taking a pledge, but-
John?
I, abstain, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Hastings?
No strong feelings.
Okay, Ms. Ackley?
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Chair votes yes. Well, it's not a vote, it's a consensus. Any more discussion on this? Ms. Hurley, do you have anything else on it?
I do not.
Okay.
Do you want me to send the pledge form to Ms. Hurley, so she can send it around?
So she can share with the council?
Yeah, it's what they used, you know.
Yeah, that's one Frederick, let's look at the one that Mr. Wilber did as well, may want to mesh them together. Any more discussion? All right, next on the agenda is a letter of support for the disparity grant. You should have it in front of you. Mr. Cannon, are we gonna talk about your letter of support as well?
It's on the agenda. It's on the revised agenda, yes.
Right, I don't see it on here, but I know I discussed it with Ms. Hurley.
Yeah, a revised agenda, I think, went out yesterday or something, didn't it?
Okay.
It actually went out today.
Today, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we doing the letter, are we doing the disparity grant first, or what?
Yeah, might as well.
I'm okay with it.
All right, you're okay with the disparity grant?
Yes.
Bill?
Mm-hmm.
Ernie?
Yep.
Joe? Ms. Ackley?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I'm fine with it. It's just, it's kind of funny here. A couple of weeks ago, we were talking about giving taxes away. Now we're begging for money from the state, so I don't see the humor.
No, we weren't, we weren't giving taxes away. We weren't giving taxes away. We were making an investment. We were making an investment to grow our tax-
We were giving tax abatements, okay.
We were, we were growing our tax base, an investment.
We were making, we were giving tax abatements. We'll put it that way.
And moving on, Ms. Hurley, did we talk to Mr. Posoda about him signing the disparity grant letter as well?
We did, and we do have his endorsement for that, that letter of support. I do want to mention that Delegate Carl Anerton contacted me today and said that the House did override the governor's veto on the bill that was presented last year, but it still needs to go before the Senate, so he still needs this letter of support.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, Mr. Cannon, you want to discuss yours?
It's rather simple. It's nothing, it's nothing different than what we have done the last two years in a row. It's not, it's simply a measure to allow a landlord, instead of throwing, after the eviction has been granted by the court, and the sheriff's department is there for the eviction, that's all done, this simply does only one thing. It allows a landlord to lock the door, and to leave whatever possessions may still be there, leave them in the house, instead of throwing them in the yard, which is what is required right now. And you have to leave them in the yard for 24 hours. City hates it, Sheriff's Department hates it, nobody likes it. They're doing it in Baltimore, and that's what this was fashioned after. Nothing is different at all, except for the fact that we're just gonna try it one more time to get it through Annapolis.
The people that Pilford likes it.
Yeah, you get people who come up, you have people who are stealing the property for whatever value they may be. You'll have trash that'll, that gets strewn through the neighborhoods. The city hates that. The sheriff's department likes it, because it's very simple. They can, they can be there, you can lock the door, the sheriff signs off, they leave. They don't have to sit there for two hours or three hours while you take everything out of the house and put it in the front yard. So that's all this does.
How do the people get their stuff?
Well, the people, the people, first of all, I mean, the, how, how the process really works, Ernie, is that the people know very well when the eviction's coming, and they have plenty of time to move everything out.
Still, they're obligated, there's still, their property's still in their house, so how will they get their stuff out of their house?
Well, the way it is now, Ernie, is that their property will be on, on the front lawn.
I understand that.
Yes.
So now, if it, the door's locked, how will they get their property out of their house?
Well, that's why they're, they're, that's why they are asked to remove their property before the eviction. At that point in time, they lose the right to that property.
So what?
At that point in time, once the eviction is processed, they lose their right to that property, as unfortunate as that might sound, but it's either gonna be-
Right now, they lose their right to their property, because it's on the outside. So now you're locking the door, so, so you're saying that if I get evicted, you evict me, and you come and lock my door, all my property inside the house is now yours?
Well, that is true. Actually, that property, I'd say 99% of any landlord don't want that property. If they can make an arrangement for the tenant to remove it, that would be fine, but that tenant has had weeks to remove everything. And a lot of times, they don't want it. They don't want to go through the cost of the, the difficulty of moving it, so they leave it.
Well, you've legally been given possession.
Yeah, legally, we've been given, yeah.
When it reaches that point, the owner of the property, in this case, the landlord, now has legal possession.
It's legal possession after 24 hours. He puts it out in the yard for 24 hours, and then he gets to discard it.
Well, again, legally, the tenant can come on to the property when it's in the front yard, and they can remove it. It's not there, it's not put on the front yard as a courtesy to allow them to come back and get it. It's just done so that the, as, as the courts establish, that the property be removed from the house, period. It has nothing to do with the tenant at that point. Nothing to do with the tenant. Now, if the tenant comes back and gets it, that's fine, but the courts recognize the fact that by the time the eviction is scheduled, that tenant has, has had more than enough time and notice to remove all their belongings.
That's true, but it's still their belongings, so if you lock that door, my belongings is still in that house. So had the court said, then you're gonna have to get, is the court gonna say, now that we passed, get this done, that when you lock that door, that property becomes yours? Or is it still that tenant's property? And if it's that tenant's property, how's he gonna get it?
But as Bill said, it's not the tenant's property anymore. That's why-
Is the court saying that? Has the courts declared that now that you're locking?
On the day of the eviction, they-
Now, now, now that you're locking that door. They're saying that now, because you're putting the property on the outside. But now you're going up there, instead of tomorrow, you're going and taking that property, putting it out in the yard. You're going there tomorrow to lock the door, change the lock, and lock the door.
Well, let me ask you this. How many days are you going to extend an eviction that's been established by the court? Are you gonna say, okay, you're evicted on the 17th, but then you can come back on the 18th? You can come back on the 19th?
I understand that.
Yes.
But that's not for us to decide. That's for a judge to decide if that property is yours now that that door's locked.
The judge does decide that.
No, he does, because there's no law saying now that that door's locked. And he's saying now, that what you evict somebody, you're putting the property outside.
The day of the eviction, the property no longer belongs to the tenant.
And you're putting it outside, where they can have a chance to come and get it. But what you're saying now is you locked that door, the property's on the inside, so they can't get it.
But the property is not put on, on the lawn for 24 hours for the tenant to get it. It's simply to remove it from the house.
But they have the opportunity to get it, if it's outside.
Yeah, everyone in the neighborhood has the opportunity to get it.
I mean, either way, it's unfortunate, but I think, I mean, this, this, clearly, they already have a due process in place, and I don't see a point in changing it.
The point in changing this is that you don't end up with, with everything that they own in the front yard. If it's in the front yard, it's, you know, it can get rained on within 24 hours, and the neighbors are gonna steal it.
I understand.
Right, now, now, for nine times out of 10, you're gonna have a landlord that if they have a house that's got furniture in it or any other belongings, they're gonna be glad to let this person come in and get it, because they don't want to pay somebody to take it to the dump. So that's, you know, if you look at how, how common sense will prevail, that's, that's gonna happen. But if you say, no, we don't want you to lock the door, we just want to keep putting it in the front yard, you've got a sheriff that has to wait for-
I don't think that's, I don't think that's something us as council people should decide. I think that's more like a legal thing, and I think that's something the judge should decide, whether you were able to lock that door and keep that person's property in there.
Well, it's already been decided. They're doing it in Baltimore.
Well, we're not in Baltimore. We're in Wycomical County.
What's the difference?
The judge, is it on the paper that says that?
It's still judicial process.
But, but it's not on paper saying that you can lock that door. On paper, it's saying that you have to put that property on the outside. It's not saying that you can go lock that door. What you're trying to get now is saying that we can, you can go in there and lock that door, and I think we're overstepping our bounds. We're not judges.
They've been doing it in Baltimore County for years, and it works out, it works great.
How's it doing? Does, is it issued by a judge, the state, and that they can do it?
Yes.
But we're not, what we're doing now is not getting it issued by a judge. We're getting it issued by the county council.
No, this has to go to state law, and that's what the judiciary files as state law, just like that's what they did in Baltimore.
But you're not, you're not showing us no state law that's saying you can lock a door.
It's in Baltimore. You can look, it's, it's in, it's part of what we had in the last two years. This is the third year we've done it. We've approved it two years in a row, Ernie, unanimously.
Yeah, but is it in the law that said you can lock that door?
It is, yes.
But then why is it keep being denied in, in Annapolis?
Because, well, that's, that's because that's Annapolis. It went through the House unanimously, and there were difficulties with some of the committees in the Senate, so that's what we're trying to work on. But what we're trying to do is to get it, get an approval or a letter of endorsement from the county council, the same as we've done the last two years in a row.
Is the, is the county executive endorse this?
I'm waiting for him to. He's supposed to, he's supposed to let us know. He's supposed to let us know today. I'm waiting to find out exactly what his opinion's gonna be.
Because we really can't do anything unless we have his endorsement, right?
I'm okay with that.
That's not true what you were saying a couple of meetings ago.
No.
No, you misunderstood me. I said I'm okay with that. I'm waiting for his endorsement.
Any more discussion?
I guess, I guess-
One question. You say this is the third year we're putting it. It seems like we're beating on a dead horse here, when it's the third year now.
You believe me, there's a lot of dead horses in Annapolis, yeah.
Yeah, but what I, what I'm saying is, we keep, we've been hearing about these other letters we've been saying, and I understand what you're, what you want here, John. I see the issues you have, but, and any, any landlord has, but we keep hearing that we should have these letters in there in a timely fashion, and, you know, they're back in session and working away, and here, it pops up again. Aren't we late again on this thing?
No, we're not late. It's on the agenda today, but we're not late. I mean, they're asking for us to get the, a letter of endorsement up there. The bill's already been drafted. We're just looking for a, a letter of endorsement from the county. I'm still, I'm gonna, I'm expected to get a letter of endorsement from the sheriff, and also expect to get a letter of endorsement from the mayor's office.
Why didn't we have that when we had this letter? Or do you want the, do you want those letters for Annapolis? Or is that what you're looking for the letters for, for Annapolis, from the sheriff and from the mayor?
Right, yes. Yeah, they just simply, all they do is change the date and send the, send it back up again.
So what's, is the city of Salisbury voted on this? Their council voted to support this?
They've supported it the last two years.
But they haven't done so this year?
It's simply a matter of contacting the mayor's office and getting the mayor to get a letter of endorsement to us. Nothing's, nothing has changed over the last two years. It's nothing more than the same bill. We're just reintroducing it to, to the General Assembly.
So that letter of endorsement from the mayor, does that include a letter of endorsement from the city council, just like we're doing?
I don't remember what they gave us last year. I'd have to, I have to see.
Okay, so you don't have that yet. Okay. Any more discussion on this? All right, consensus, Mr. McCain?
I don't, I came into the meeting this evening fine with it, but, you know, I understand the debate, but, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Davis?